Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council this eighteenth day of April. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Just before we bow our heads, please take a moment of reflection. Let's also keep in our thoughts the family and loved ones of Perth County paramedic Nikki Nagy, who tragically lost her life in an avalanche this month. Through our land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananasa Bay, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse indigenous Matia and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. You have curmudgeon interests, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. Confirmation of the agenda. Anything anyone wishes to add or change? If not, we have a motion that the April eighteenth, 2024 agenda be approved. Moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Counselor Smith. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we have sixteen items on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like polled or they have any questions on? Then we count so we have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items six point one to six point sixteen and approves the April four, 2024 council minutes. Moved by Counsel Aitchison, second by Counsel Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we do have a public meeting this morning. Okay, so that council, regular council recesses for the purpose of holding a planning public meeting at approximately nine oh two AM. Moved by Counsel Trunkowski, second by Counsel McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, this morning we have a planning public meeting, OPA two two four. We have John with us this morning. Morning, John, and welcome. And the floor is yours.
Do you want to do a confirmation of agenda?
Just hang on, Tyler, this is a gift. Okay, I need a motion that the planning public meeting, April eighteenth, agenda be approved. Moved by Counsel Aitchison, second by Counsel Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and the council approves the minutes of the February fifteenth, 2024 planning public meeting. Moved by Counsel Kassenberg, second by Counsel McKenzie. Any questions on those minutes? Comments? All in favor? Carried. And now, sorry, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Naggetz and members of council. Today before you is an official plan amendment. It's number two two four. It's the red star here on the slide, which is the just south of Cromerdy there. It's on the border of Huron County and it's in West Perth. Location is seventy-one hundred, line seventeen. The owner is Brent Dawson, who is here today with his agent Scott Patterson. Excellent. So the subject lands are designated agricultural and natural resources environment in the Perth County Fish Plan. The lands are zoned agriculture and natural resources environment two in the West Perth zoning boundary. Next slide. So the proposal is to essentially to keep the subject lands within the agricultural designation, but to add a site-specific provision to expand the existing secondary farm occupation. You see on the picture here is where the existing secondary farm occupation is situated, and they're proposing to expand into agricultural shed. So in order to permit this expansion, a maximum of four off-resident, off-farm resident employees for the business is being proposed, whereas the Perth County Fish Plan stipulates that only two employees be required for a maximum. The official plan amendment also is proposing to permit the on-farm diversified use to occupy six hundred meters squared of gross floor area rather than the required three hundred and seventy-five meters squared in the Perth County Fish Plan. Next slide, please. So you can see in the image to the right, the area, the existing facility, and then in the yellow is the proposed expansion. It's proposed to use just about less than fifty percent of that existing drive shed for the business. So the accepted method of regulating the size of one of these on-farm diversified uses, or as the Perth County Fish Plan calls it, secondary farm occupations, as established by the province in the OMAFRA guidelines, and this is their publication number eight fifty-one, is to consider all, is to consider the overall lot coverage rather than its gross floor area as considered in the Perth County Fish Plan. As such, the subject lands have a lot area of about one hundred and one acres, resulting in two percent of the lot area being approximately eighty-two hundred meters squared. The proposal to expand the business's maximum floor area to this six hundred meters squared is well below the OMAFRA recommended two percent lot coverage. Additionally, there's additional land necessary to accommodate parking, septic system and driveway. All this extra area is also well under the two percent recommended by the OMAFRA guidelines. Next slide, please. Second, second instance of the official plan, where we're talking about off-farm employees. Again, the applicants are requesting four. Perth County Official Plan only allows for two. The intent of capping the number of off-farm employees in the Perth County Official Plan is to ensure the business does not become too large in size. The OMAFRA guidelines, two percent maximum, doesn't actually reference the number of employees. As such, we're using the two percent lot area requirement as a guide here to ensure that the business does not become too large in size. And as such, since the business, since the business's lot area is, is the two percent, sorry, we are satisfied with the increase in the number of employees. Next slide, please. So notice of the public meeting was provided to neighboring landowners on March twenty-ninth. We have not received any comments from members of the public at this time, and be happy to take any questions, but Perth County is recommending approval of the application at this time.
Okay, thanks, John. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or his agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to address or make a presentation?
Just hear your full support.
Okay. Do we have any questions from members of council? So the planning public meeting will be adjourned at nine oh nine AM. We're going to second for that. Moved by Counsel Aitchison, second by Counsel Duncan. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and then we'll go back into writing your council. So the regular council reconvene at nine oh nine AM. Moved by Counsel Trunkowski, second by Counsel McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, so now we're going to go to staff reports, and the first one is under planning. It's the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number two two four. John?
Thank you, Warden Naggetz and County Council. Again, we are recommending approval at this time. Any questions on behalf of the answer?
Okay, any questions? Comments? Nope, okay, we have a motion that council receives the County of Perth Official Plan Amendment Number two two four Dawson report, and that council approves the official plan amendment Number two two four to the County of Perth Official Plan submitted by Scott Patterson on behalf of Brent Dawson affecting lands, legal described as Lot eighteen, concession fourteen, seven one zero zero, line seventeen, Hibbert Ward, municipality of West Perth. Moved by Counsel McKenzie, second by Counsel Aitchison. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thank you, John. We're going to move now to corporate services, and we have a corporate services update, and Annette's away this morning, so Lori's going to do it for us.
Thank you, through the warden. This is a monthly activity report for corporate services, the five divisions within that portfolio, and Annette is in Florida, so enjoying some great vacation. So she had two highlights in that particular report at the front. One of our staff, Jennifer Giorgio, an archives technician, didn't get her appraisal credentials after some intensive training through the National Archival Appraisal Board. So that is a service that the Archives does undertake, as well as the cultivating opportunity grant recipients have been contacted, and those small grants are being distributed. There is a host of information in the report that shows the wide range of activities across the departments, not only internally, but you know, in the GIS department, they're collaborating with West Perth staff to develop self-serve asset management processes and dashboards. So that'll be something that we'll want to bring back and highlight for council, some of the work done between the county and the local municipalities. And we try and look at some of those activities as a pilot project, and then, once we work all the bugs out, we're able to move that across the four organizations. So some really good work going on across the department. And so if you do have any questions, if I can't answer it, I will be happy to have Annette speak to it at the next meeting, or I can follow up in between. Fine work being done.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Any questions, comments of the report? Nope, okay, then we have a motion that council receives the Corporate Services March 2024 Update Report for Information. Moved by Counsel Smith, second by Counsel Duncan. All those in favor? Carried. Lori? Now we'll move to Public Works, and the first item is the tender results for Perth Line twenty and Flat Creek Bridge Rehabilitation, and we have Bill and John joining us this morning, so morning, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, council. Thank you, Warden Naggetz. Through you, the first report here from our department with respect to Capital Project RS zero zero three six, the rehabilitation of Perth Line twenty between the limits of Highway twenty-three, Russell Dale, and Point, just east of Road one seventy near the Huron County border. The rehabilitation of Flat Creek Bridge structure within the limits is included within this road rehabilitation contract. The bid opportunity was posted on the county's online bidding platform, where we had twenty-four plant takers and five submissions before the bid closing time on April second. A summary of the bid results is provided in the report, along with the recommendation to award tender twenty twenty-four dash zero three one dash zero three Perth Line twenty and Flat Creek Bridge Rehabilitation to Laviss Contracting for their tender price of one million four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, which represents the low bids of the submissions received. Tender breakdown is provided in the report. The combined budget allocation for these two capital projects is one million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The tender submission received from Laviss is within the project budget for both the bridge work and the road work, as detailed in the report. Also, a contingency allowance covering both projects is included with the bid amount. Laviss has completed similarly scoped road reconstruction work within the county in the past, as recently as 2021, when they did the cold-in-place recycling of Perth Line thirty-three, and in 2018, they did the hot-mix paving and cold recycling on Perth Line seventy-two. Staff are not concerned with the contractor's ability to fulfill the obligations of this contract. Both the hot-mix paving and the recycling work will be completed by Laviss's own forces. The bridge rehabilitation work will be completed by WG Kelly Construction out of Mitchell. They will be a subcontractor to Laviss for that work. Completion dates are specified in the contract. I don't have a construction schedule at this time, but this construction may begin as early as after the May long weekend. Single lane traffic will be maintained through the construction limits throughout the duration of the project, and that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments of the report? Counsel Aitchison?
Single lane traffic lights or flagman?
It will be traffic lights for the bridge work, and then pilot vehicle for the road work.
Because that road tends to be kind of busy in the summer. Sure does.
That's why I've asked. May not be as busy now that gas is bucking any bit.
John, go ahead.
Through the warden, just to remind council, this location for this project is just west of Russell Dale, and the MTO is planning a roundabout at that location and could start as early as 2025, so yeah, there could be a bit of traffic congestion in the summertime at that location for a few years there, but you have to break a few eggs to make an omelette.
Okay, any other questions or comments? No, we have a motion that council receives a tender results twenty twenty-four dash zero three one dash zero three Perth Line twenty and Flat Creek Bridge Rehabilitation Report, and that council award tender two zero two four dash zero three one dash zero three to Laviss Contracting Co., Limited, and that council authorize the warden and the clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth and Laviss Contracting Company Limited. Moved by Counsel McKenzie, second by Counsel Aitchison. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item is the tender results update report.
Thank you, Warden Naggetz. Through you, this report has been prepared for information and serves to update council on the results of the tendering process for two capital fleet replacement projects, and to inform council of tender results for Capital Project RS zero zero eight, which is the rehabilitation of Perth Road one oh one, Oxford Road twenty-four, a boundary road between Perth and Oxford County from Tavistock East. In keeping with the previous policy, tenders were issued for the replacement of one three-quarter ton pickup truck asset, as well as the replacement of the existing wheel loader sweeper attachment. Both of these fleet replacement tenders were published to the county's online bidding system. A summary of the tender results is provided in the report. In both cases, the low tender, or the low bid submission is within the approved budget allocation, and the value of each tender permits execution of work by the CAO. Notice of award has been provided to Oxford Dodge Chrysler for the supply of one three-quarter ton truck valued at sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty, sorry, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Similarly, notice of award has been provided to Colboy Enterprises for the supply of one hydraulic pickup sweeper loader attachment valued at fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Delivery of the pickup truck is expected in third quarter of this year, and the sweeper attachment in time for spring sweeping operations. In addition to those two fleet procurements, the report speaks to Capital Project RS zero zero eight. Oxford County administered a construction tender for various road rehabilitation works within their county. Included in that tender was Oxford Road twenty-four, Perth Road one oh one. The project is captured within our capital program, as it is a boundary road, and we have a budget allocation of one point five million for that project to fund our fifty percent share. Oxford received seven submissions. The low bid was received by Branco Construction. The tendered amount within that contract or tender pertaining to this road project is one million, nine hundred, four thousand, five hundred, forty-seven dollars. Construction costs again will be split fifty-fifty between Perth and Oxford. The scope of work for that project mainly consists of cold-in-place recycling and hot-mix paving. Road O' Mail has been listed as a sub to Branco. Oxford County staff will be presenting a report to their council next week with the recommendation to award that tender. So I just want to reiterate, that tender has not been awarded yet. The tender also includes provisional items related to the work, and staff are currently in discussions with Oxford regarding these items. If we do go through with the provisional work, the project will still remain under its budget allocation, and that summarizes the update report. If there's any questions, we're happy to address them.
Good, thanks, Bill. Any questions of the report? John?
And maybe just to further this discussion with council, as you would remember, late last year, we approved some intersection improvements at Punky Doodle's Corner. That is going to be a separate project. It is currently in the design phase, and the tender is expected to be out by Oxford County likely in early May. So that'll be a separate tender for that work, and likely scheduled to follow this particular road work in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more questions or comments, we have a motion that council receives a tender results update report for information. Moved by Counsel Trunkowski, second by Counsel Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and the third report is the speed radar signs.
Thank you, Warden Naggetz. Good morning, council. This report outlines a framework and costs associated with the permanent installation of speed radar feedback signs. That would be in the villages and built-up areas along our county road network. Since 2020, public works staff have utilized four solar-powered speed radar signs to promote speed awareness and track speeds in our reduced speed zones. The department has received positive feedback from the residents of the towns and villages where the signs have been deployed, with the only negative being the minimum frequency they are up at any one location. Staff have recommended criteria for the permanent installation of speed radar feedback signs as outlined in the report. The intention would be for reduced speed zones located in a town, village, or built-up area, which is a through road, meaning that there are no stop controls within or at the ends of the reduced speed zone. Staff have identified twenty-two locations in the county road network which meet the criteria listed in the report. We would require forty-four signs at a cost of seven thousand dollars per sign, resulting in a total cost of just over three hundred thousand dollars for a blanket installation. The report also provides a phased-in approach over a four-to-five-year period, where staff have ranked locations based on traffic volumes on the roadway and eighty-fifth percentile speeds in the reduced speed zones. The twenty-two locations and their rank are tabled in the report, and it should be noted that our neighbors to the South Oxford County have done a similar phased-in approach over the last few years with speed radar signs. The report also outlines procurement, maintenance, and usage of our current speed radar signs, should this be implemented. Funding for the project would be from the Capital Roads Reserve, and that reserve currently sits at just around three million dollars. We could, the report makes recommendation that it be included in the 2025 Roads Capital Budget. However, if council chooses, we could do either a blanket installation or a phased-in approach starting this year and still get it done. If you have to answer any questions?
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments of the report? Counsel Aitchison?
Just a quick question or comment, I guess, John. So I looked at the twenty-two, and you know, I can definitely see it all being on there. And then I was looking at the ranking, and I was somewhat, I wouldn't use the word dismayed, but Harmony was up fairly high, like fourth or fifth, and I can see that. And then St. Paul's was like four from the end, so it'd be about eighteen. My only comment, is all the traffic that speeds through Harmony, probably ninety percent of that speeds through St. Paul's. Because that's your cottage traffic, your truck traffic, everything. So I was kind of surprised that St. Paul's would be that far down, and Harmony up where it should have been. There's a lot more homes than, what not in St. Paul's than there is in Harmony. Just a comment or a question? You know, I could definitely see Donegal being way up high. But I was surprised St. Paul's was as far down as it was. And actually, Wortburg was halfway down, and then Rostock, same road, way down at the bottom. I just wonder what the logic in that was.
Through, through the warden, obviously, we had to choose some criteria in order to rank these, and we best thought that was facilitated through how busy is the road, traffic volume, and the eighty-fifth percentile speed that we observe within the reduced speed zone. As it pertains to say Harmony and St. Paul's, our traffic volumes are making sort of, on an average annual daily traffic, so you're correct, traffic volume in the summertime heading to cottage country, it's going to be higher. We look at traffic volumes more of on an average over the course of the year when we report on these things. As Harmony also is a fifty K reduced speed zone, whereas St. Paul's is a sixty K reduced speed zone. I think we saw a report earlier in the year regarding Kurtsville, and we compared both Harmony and St. Paul's in that report, and you saw basically a similar eighty-fifth percentile speed, even higher in Harmony than St. Paul's. That could be just from the characteristics of the roadway. It could be from enforcement.
I think the latter there would be the one that slowed that down.
It should also be noted that the traffic volume on Perth Line twenty-six is much higher than it is on Perth Line twenty.
Yeah, because there'll be some go straight through, straight it up at number seven.
Okay, Counsel Kassenberg?
Thank you, Warden Naggetz.
Give yourself a second here. There, we hear you now.
Thank you, Warden Naggetz. Appreciate that. You'd think I'd have figured that one out by now, right? I want to speak in favor of being all in here. I think that this is a fine opportunity for us to show immediate leadership on this issue. We know that these signs are well appreciated by local environments. People who are living in these areas have expressed appreciation for the temporary signs when we use them, and I think we show clear leadership in suggesting that we are concerned about the safety of these areas on our county roads. So given, given the wonderful report, thank you to the staff, I propose that we move forward with option A.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Trunkowski?
Thanks, Warden Naggetz. Through you, I too have a similar mind with Counsel Kessenberg, that I support the option A approach. It is expensive, but you can't put a price on safety, road safety. I think that's important, that we proceed with the option A. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counsel Smith?
Yes, I agree with option A. Just a question for, for staff, for John. If, I don't know if they'll be permanent, but we still have the ability to move, to move them around to another road, should we deem that, hey, this road needs to have those signs up? Just inquiring about the inventory, if that's possible.
Through the warden, the idea would be is these are permanent installations within the twenty-two locations. We do have four, four-speed speed radar signs currently. The idea would be is that we would utilize those four signs within the areas where, the locations that don't meet the criteria, or they could be a replacement, should one be made, and things like that. So the idea would be we'd still keep the four speed radar signs that we have and utilize them in other them in other areas. The criteria also establishes that the Director of Public Works has discretion of where we could put these signs. So as I've outlined in the report, there are some locations, and I'll speak to Millbank, for instance. Millbank has two sort of very long reduced speed zones, one being on Perth Road 121, which is a through roadway and is a location identified for permanent installation. However, Line 72 is a reduced speed zone, fairly lengthy, going by Anna Mae's Restaurant there, but does have a stop control at the end of the speed zone. So by the criteria, that particular roadway does not meet the criteria. This would allow staff discretion in, if in the future we wanted to look at other locations, that we could do so.
Okay, Counsel Duncan?
Through you, Warden. John, these signs also collect data.
Correct.
And speed and, okay, so we could pass that along to our enforcement partners if we start to see that these signs aren't working, but they are collecting some excessive speed data. And I guess my second thought is, I'm all for option A too, because I look at option B, we're probably looking, if we phase it in over five years, we're probably looking at an extra 10% by the time the project's all done, just due to inflationary pressures. So I'm in favor of option A as well.
Okay, Counsel Agerston?
Same comments, I would go option A. I have, like, I drive down into Oxford, Embaro a lot, going to the hospital in Woodstock and I have one in Embaro, permanent. Oh my God, does it make a difference?
Yep.
It does make a difference. It's kind of like a flashing light you got just out in front of my place for Downey Central School. I'll be looking out the window there in the morning, watching some news and you'll see the brake lights coming on even before the lights are flashing.
Okay, John?
And through the warden, just more to Counselor Duncan's remarks, collecting the speed data is a very important feature with these signs and the ability to collect it. So we currently have a web portal and we can look at the speeds currently within any of these areas with our signs. So we're continuously monitoring these speeds in the town. It's useful information when we go to write reports like this. We have shared this data with our policing services and I can tell you without a doubt, they've used it to help us out with enforcement, so. I would just make also one thing with the recommendation or the motion and that you direct staff either to bring this for the 2025 capital budget or to implement within the 2024 budget year.
Yeah, okay. Counsel Agerston?
So I'm going to ask a quick question. Total cost of these signs is? I didn't do the math on them.
It'll be approximately $308,000.
I would think you'd want to move on that sooner than later. The only reason I'm going to say that, if you've got some really good tenders come back in your hot-mix paving, which is part of your capital budget for roads, there should be the money there to offset this cost this year, in my thinking. If I'm wrong, tell me.
Counsel Duncan?
I'm in favor of going ahead right now, too.
Okay.
Counsel Kastenberg?
Counsel Kastenberg? I'd like to move this motion that we add option A to our resolution and that we add that we begin in the 2024 budget year.
Okay, well, I'll read it and then I'll go with that, Todd, thanks. Counsel received the radar sign report and counsel approved their criteria and installation of permanent speed radar signs in reduced speed zones as identified in the speed radar sign report and that counsel direct staff to include project costs in the 2024 capital budget as an all-encompassing project, which is option A. Okay, so moved by Counsel Kastenberg, second by Counsel Trunkowski. Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to council reports. Anyone have any council report they wish to give? And then we go to bylaws. We have two bylaws, so the first bylaw is a Levis Road Rehabilitation Bylaw and it's a bylaw 3974-2024, be read a first, second, and third time and finally passes 18th day of April 2024. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by Counsel McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. And the second bylaw is the OPA 224 bylaw and that's bylaw 3975-2024, be read a first, second, third time and finally passes 18th day of April 2024. Moved by Counsel McKenzie, second by Counsel Duncan. All in favor? Carried. Okay, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Excuse me, any announcements? Counsel Kastenberg?
Well, I can't resist the opportunity to point out to Perth County Council that the Listowel Cyclones are the 2024 Cherry Cup winners. We, our team defeated the Stratford team in five games and I think that's a source of pride for all of the county, perhaps except Stratford. But anyway, I thought that we should raise some congratulations to our, the Listowel team for this accomplishment.
Well, thanks, Todd, and yes, congratulations to the Listowel Cyclones. Counsel Trunkowski?
I support Counselor Kastenberg's statement. I may be all business on the outside, but I do have my Listowel Cyclones executive shirt inside, so all the best to their Southern Cup pursuits.
That's great news. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Just to add one comment to that.
Sure.
There's a Perth County that actually advanced to the Southern Cup. And Listowel's going to have to go through St. Mary's to get there. But I'm not picking a favorite here by any stretch, but it's good to see two local teams get to the Southern Cup.
The mayor's bet.
Yeah. Okay, just a plug for economic development. Tonight, there is a Business After Five gathering in Shakespeare at Harry Ten Shillings. It's from 4:30 to 6:30. So if anyone wishes to drop in, say hello, say hello to some of the local businesses, that'd be great. And also tonight is the Rural Urban Dinner and I know Counselor Orr is attending and I am attending and we're going to, they are inducting three individuals into their agricultural wall of fame and they are Steve Dolson and Karen Gobrath from North Perth and they are dairy farmers. And we have Sandy Brock from West Perth and she is a sheep and grain farmer. So congratulations to all of them. It's great to see and I'm sure tonight will be a great evening. So there's nothing else and we will move to the next item. There is no need for a closed session. So then we go to our confirmatory bylaw and it's a bylaw 3976-2024. Being a bylaw, confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting held April 18th is read a first, second, third time and finally passed April 18th, 2024. I need a move and a secondary. Move by Counsel Kastenberg, second by Counsel Smith. All in favor? Carried. And the last motion of the morning is that the council meeting be adjourned at 9:39 a.m. Moved by Counsel McKenzie, second by Counsel Trunkowski. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Have a good rest of your day.